And how to explain to our friends or family or children, you know, what was occurring. Let's take a moment to appreciate the good things that have happened and what we can do to make 2021 a better year.
Thank you, Alder. On to approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Weary. To approve the minutes, any corrections that need to be made? Seeing no requests, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. You guys have it, the minutes have been approved, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any changes to be made here? Seeing none, all in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. You guys have it, the agenda has been approved. Now we're on to resolutions, we just have one resolution this evening, but it's a big one. This is a resolution recognizing the creation of the Mahan Creek Neighborhood Association. It's the first neighborhood association created under my tenure. Wish we were able to be together in person to celebrate the achievement, but we will recognize you nonetheless virtually by reading this resolution and having it adopted by our common council. So with that said, I will read the resolution. As I said, resolution of recognition, Mahan Creek Neighborhood Association by the Common Council of the City of Green Bay, whereas the mayor and common council of the City of Green Bay, along with its staff and citizens, recognize the importance of developing and maintaining healthy neighborhoods throughout the community, and whereas the City of Green Bay and wishes to reach out to all segments of the community by supporting the formation of effective neighborhood associations, and whereas the Mahan Creek Neighborhood Association has been organized by residents of the City of Green Bay with a mission statement as follows, quote, "The mission of the Mahan Creek Neighborhood Association is to bring neighbors together to foster community, create unity, and provide a supportive environment for families," unquote. Whereas the Mahan Creek Neighborhood Association will serve residents of the City of Green Bay and the neighborhood bounded by east side of Nicolay Drive to the west, the south side of Scottwood Drive to the north, the City of Green Bay city limits, and the west side of Bay Settlement Road to the east, and Highway 5457 to the south. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Green Bay, whose mayor and common council are herein assembled, officially recognizes the Mahan Creek Neighborhood Association, and be it further resolved that the mayor, common council, and staff of the City of Green Bay hereby pledge their support and cooperation in addressing the needs of the citizens of this neighborhood in particular and the community in general. So just wanted to extend my thanks and appreciation to those folks who organized and created the Mahan Creek Neighborhood Association, Alder Dorf and I, and some city staff had the opportunity to be out there for their first meeting where that creation took place. I think we're well-known across the state and probably even country as a city that's incredibly supportive of our neighborhood associations, really values the work that they do and what they contribute to our city. So really appreciative of the efforts of these citizens in joining together and forming this neighborhood association. Alder Dorf, any comments as the Alder for?
I'm very, I was very pleased to see this happening. I mean, it's been in the works for a number of years. I think that brings to number 10 of the neighborhood associations in my district have, this is the district of neighborhoods and neighborhood associations and people that care about each other. And I'd like to make the motion to adopt, is that appropriate at this time?
Absolutely.
To adopt.
Motion made to adopt the resolution by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alder, the favor, go ahead.
Yes, I also want to congratulate them, and not all of that neighborhood association is in Alder Dorf's district, some of it's in mine. Yes, and it borders on the Eard Drive Neighborhood Association, and I do know people up there, and I think it has expanded in homes from what it was years ago, and I know some of them had asked to join us, but it was kind of a Nicolay, it's kind of a weird situation the way it is for our neighborhood association, so I'm glad that they finally got to have their own neighborhood association. Congratulations.
Very good, thanks so much for those comments.
Mayor, it's Celestine.
Yes.
Hi, I'm not sure if any of the founding members are here to, with us tonight, if so, just start talking. I don't think so, but I just, you know, what we normally do is to have the members of the neighborhood association come forward and we have the chance to applaud everyone, so I'll just read the officers' names if that's okay with you, Mayor.
Yeah, sounds great.
So the president is Portia Georgia, the vice president is Brittany DeVillery, the secretary is Amy Bisaw, and the treasurer is Megan Tashkhanov. And so I just wanted to read those names out loud since we're doing this virtually. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Jeffers and everyone else, residents of those neighborhood who made the creation of the association possible. So with that, we do have a motion to approve the resolution and a second. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted and the neighborhood association is created. Onto presentations, we have a presentation in concert with the Green Bay Police Department on equipment for police officers. Want to offer us a little bit of an intro?
Sure thing, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alder persons, this has been a long time coming, this is a presentation on body cameras and it's been a long time coming. More than five years ago, the Green Bay Police Department started looking into body cameras, they did a full review of them and made recommendations, were even proposing to move forward with body cameras 2015 and 16, however, because of the price and because of some concerns that we had, we elected not to move forward at that time. Those concerns were most specifically the amount of time that they had to be retained, and more importantly, what kind of rules there were for recording people in their homes, recording juveniles, recording victims, and we were really concerned about privacy rights for people. So we met and they clarified that. So at the beginning of this year, the legislature passed a couple of bills, Act 108, which enacted Statute 165.87, which calls for, among other things, a written policy for the department to have body cameras, retention requirements limiting it to about 120 days in most cases, which is much more reasonable than the old system was, and clarified what is necessary and what needs to be released and what does not have to be released and what has to be redacted. So it did a lot to help make it clear what the rules were, and I think it's between that and between the support that we've been getting from the Packers on this particular venue, this particular venture, I think now is the right time for us to move forward on body cameras. I'm joined today by Captain Ben Allen, who's kind of spearheading this project for us, he's working in detectives, Mr. Jason Baman, who's one of the technology wizards that we have there, Commander Warwick, as usual, is of course here, and I'm joined by Kelsey Donahue, she's from Axon Corporation. And we did a review in 2015 and Axon came out on top, we did another review with all the vendors that we found that were out there, and we looked at four, and again, Axon came on top. We looked at Axon, we looked at WatchGuard, we looked at G-TAC, and we looked at Body Worn. Ben Allen can expand on that if you'd like to after Ms. Donahue does her presentation, but really, for the Green Bay Police Department, the comprehensive package offered by Axon, which is the cameras, the storage, the tasers, the in-car video, really, we think rose above all the rest of the competition that's out there. And unless you have any specific questions for me at the beginning, I'll turn it over to Ms. Donahue, she's from Axon Corporation, she's got a brief PowerPoint presentation, she can walk us through and kind of talk about what their whole system entails.
Very good, thanks Chief.
Perfect, thanks Chief, I'm going to attempt to share the screen now. All right, can you see the screen that says Green Bay PD and has the crest and everything? Good? All right, perfect. So real quick, I just want to thank everybody for their time, my goal is not death by PowerPoint, I do not learn best by PowerPoint, so I'm more conversational, so if at any time you have any questions that come up, please feel free to ask. This is a very brief overview of kind of the partnership that we're hoping to establish here with Green Bay PD and the City of Green Bay as a whole, and the community as a whole. So with that, I will go ahead and get started. A little background about me, just, you know, for your knowledge, is I've been with Axon for eight years now, so not a short time, I'm one of our veterans here, and I do happen to live in Michigan now, so that's why you see that beautiful big M behind me, so I'm only about a five-hour drive from Green Bay and I've been out there many times.
And as a Badger, I'll try to look beyond the backdrop there.
And with our performance against Wisconsin a few weeks ago, then that's fine, and I'm actually an Arizona State fan, I moved from Arizona two years ago to Michigan, so.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, all right, perfect, so we're going to get started here, so Axon, in case you didn't know, used to be known as Taser International, so we really began our partnership with law enforcement with the tasers back in 1993. And so as we started to evolve into this technology company, we just didn't feel like the name Taser really fit us any longer, and it didn't really give us the identity that we were looking to have as the leading technology provider for all of law enforcement. Our mission over these years has been to protect life, that has never changed, and that's protect the life of the officers that we're providing these tools to, and also protect the life of those citizens within the community as well with less lethal force options. And the other motto that we have here that we don't list often is protect truth, so, you know, we're really looking to provide transparency and accountability for all with this program. To date, we have over 225,000 lives saved with our less lethal taser devices, you know, that's, it's the most widely used and most studied less lethal device in all of law enforcement. Axon's, the way that we view Axon is as a cohesive network, so we view this as a connected ecosystem, and it's comprised of the devices, like the tasers, the body cameras, you know, all of the hardware pieces, the applications that run them, which are built in-house here at Axon, we don't acquire any other greeting from the ground up, and then to the people that actually are going to utilize these, from officers to people we might not think of, often like district attorneys that need to get the cases resolved quickly and are receiving this digital evidence. So what we're looking to do here with Green Bay PD is called our Officer Safety Plan. This, as Chief mentioned, is what's going to combine all of these resources together into one cohesive package. It also makes it really easy for cities because it puts it under one contract, so it's one line item every year, that's direct feedback we've had from law enforcement agents. This Officer Safety Plan is going to include the tasers, which I will let Captain Allen talk about in a little bit, are needing some upgrading, the body cameras, which you don't have today, and then upgrades for your in-car cameras, because there's a few issues with those at this time as well. So I'm going to start with the taser piece, and this is going to be pretty brief. The new taser is called the Taser 7, and we operate on the three Cs here, which is confidence, community, and connectivity. The confidence piece is to give officers confidence to de-escalate dangerous situations with the most effective CEW ever. So what we did is we did some surveys with law enforcement, and we found out that the majority of situations are within a four to 10-foot range, so we're thinking traffic stops and, you know, any close contact you have with the community. Traditionally, our tasers did not accommodate that well, because you had to be about eight feet away to get a full foot of what we call spread, where the probes are going to be, you know, top and bottom, and then it's going to complete a circuit and create that neuromuscular incapacitation, or NMI. Now, with this particular tool, we have two different options, where they can have a close quarters option, which is about four-foot radius, so that gives them a little bit more confidence to utilize this and know it's actually going to be effective. And then there's also the standoff cartridge, which is good at 22 feet or further. I've seen that actually personally be used with a department, they had a suicide call, suicide by cop call, the guy had a knife in his hand, there's a great video of this online, by the way, from Taylor PD here in Michigan, and they were able to utilize this Taser 7 with those standoff cartridges, subdue the subject, pull the knife from his hand and save his life. The community piece is showing the community that you have commitment to safety with de-escalation tools. So one of the pieces of the Taser 7 is that it has this beautiful warning arc on it, so the big black button right here, so you don't actually have to fire a cartridge, the officer has the ability to actually press this button and it will produce electricity across the front of those cartridges without having to take them out. It's loud, it's bright, and it can typically de-escalate a situation and not make it go further into actually deploying those probes. So that's going to improve the officer and the citizen. Another part of that is what we call our immersive training or our de-escalation training. We do provide an Oculus system that's going to provide virtual reality empathy training for the department. This is not to replace any of the CIT training that the department has today, but it will supplement that. So we're really targeting mental health scenarios. Right now, we've got autism, schizophrenia, and suicidal ideation loaded into our system with PTSD to come shortly. What that provides is a way for an officer to put on this Oculus and have a VR opportunity to be in the position of the officer that's on scene for a schizophrenic, and then also put themselves in the shoes of the schizophrenic, hearing the voices in their head, having a screwdriver in your hand, and trying to, you know, see what it's like to be in that person's shoes. It's a great training tool, takes all of like three minutes versus a full day in a classroom. And so that is, like I said, included in what we're trying to accomplish here as well. And then the last piece is the connectivity, this doesn't matter as much for the city, but it matters a lot for the department, because it makes the workflow that much easier for these tasers, so gives them more time back on the street, because they can just dock up this battery, pull a new one and walk back out the door, and it's going to automatically pull the logs, you can attach it to reports, to cases, anything that you need within evidence.com. And that's what we call a dock-and-walk workflow here, so saves about four man-hours per year per weapon, which, you know, that's dollars saved over time. The other thing that's great about these tasers is they're signal-enabled, so signal is autoactivation, so when a taser is activated, so when the safety is disarmed, it will also activate their body cameras. This can be set up to be activated as a one-to-one, so that taser will only activate that officer's camera, or it can be set up to activate any cameras in that vicinity within a 30-second period. This is great because it provides the opportunity, when there's a high adrenaline situation, for the officer to be thinking about what they should be doing to respond to that rather than turning on their cameras, so it will automatically do that for them. There's also a buffer built into the camera that can go back anywhere from 30 seconds to two minutes, with or without audio, that will also provide the context that led up to them having to draw that taser. Another piece of the signal is the signal sidearm, so this actually goes on the outside of the duty holster, you draw your gun, it activates your camera, same concept. This is one that we're seeing used everywhere at this point, and I think everybody can understand with recent events that this is a highly sought-after tool for law enforcement, you draw your weapon, it activates your camera. So with that, we'll go into the body camera. I like to say, so with body cameras, the hardware is kind of hardware, the cameras are very similar, what's going to set this apart is going to be what we're doing behind the scenes with evidence.com or Axon Evidence, as we call it, and we'll get into that here in a little bit, and that's the management, the storage, the whole program after the video is recorded. But this Body 3 is a fantastic camera, it's a 12-hour shift life, so it's going to last through their whole shift here, it's going to allow these officers to take back time, because it's going to automate a lot of those time-consuming tasks. A couple of other things that are really important about this are what we call Axon Respond. And so this is going to provide GPS tracking when the camera is activated, there is an option that it can track cameras off, but that is something that they would have to discuss as a department, you know, we don't see a lot of departments use that, we typically see it when it's just activated. You can livestream into any camera that's recording if you have the privilege to do so, that means that you're part of the command staff or the admin staff there. You can also offload critical incidents in the field, these cameras are equipped with dual SIMs, so that means that it's using LTE or cell service in the field, this is no additional cost to the department, Axon actually covers the cost for those SIM cards, so if there is a critical officer-involved shooting that Chief needs to see right away, they can actually push that offload in the field, and Chief can have access to it within evidence.com in minutes. And then there's also officer gunshot activation. So if there is involved in a shooting and it's in close quarters, the camera will activate a recording, and it will also send an alert to command staff or whoever set up in evidence.com to receive that alert and say, hey, there's been gunshots detected. This is not ShotSpotter, but it's really into something that's more in close proximity with the officer. A real story about this, I know I used one with Taylor PD in Michigan, I actually had a phone call last night from one of my departments here in Michigan, and it was a sergeant, he said, hey, we just put these cameras out on the street, I've got two officers, they're lost in 15 miles of dense woods, they have no phones, it's dark, there are no landmarks, we don't know where they're at, they're chasing a stabbing subject, and they got lost, there's nothing, they can't hear the highway, and so I got Respond loaded onto his phone, because we actually have an application for that to track everybody and to livestream in, and he was able to pull it up and see his officers, and he goes, I found him, and I'm not going to say the words he said, but he said, this is bleeping awesome. And he found his officers, I mean, they found him in minutes, so thinking about this as an officer safety tool is huge, we think about it a lot as, you know, dispatch can look at it and dispatch the appropriate officers to the scene, but in that situation, you're really saving these deputies, so it was a really cool call to get, well, scary call to get last night, but also cool that it turned out very well. As for the in-car, our in-car is very different, we call it Axon Fleet 2, it's very different than your traditional system, this camera is very small, and you see it's at an angle there, it sits right up behind the rearview mirror, it's going to give you a front camera and a rear camera, so you will see the passenger compartment as well, I won't go into full details on this, because that's not really what matters, but it's also going to connect into evidence.com, so we give ongoing support and partnership, and like I said, everything is built in-house. But this is really where everything comes together, so Axon Evidence, or we used to call it evidence.com, is our DEM solution, and that is a digital evidence management system. So once all of this data is recorded, it goes into Axon Evidence for review, for sharing, for making cases, for whatever we're looking to do with it at that point. I'm also going to backtrack for one second, with the fleet system, the in-car system, there are a number of signal triggers with that as well, you flip on light bars, there's a crash, there's high speed, a gunlock, you know, take the rifle out of the car, that will also activate your in-car and your body cameras as well, same with others that pull up on scene within that specific range of time. So when you go into Axon Evidence, there's actually the ability to do what we call multi-cam playback, where it can identify that there have been multiple incidents in the same area, so multiple recordings of Axon body camera footage or in-car footage, and you can pull four of those at one time to be able to watch simultaneously and review, so it's a really great time-saving feature. It's also going to, it's also going to integrate with the CAD system, so it's going to communicate with the CAD system and pull their call-for-service data to the videos and automatically tag those for them, so that it's consistent recordings and consistent metadata within evidence.com. But two of the biggest things that we talk about that are huge for departments are redaction and transcription, when Chief was talking about, you know, release of information or FOIA here, redaction is big for that, it's built in to evidence.com, so it's not something that they have to go somewhere else to do, and it's automated, so they can start an automated redaction in the background and go do something else that they need to be doing, and come back to it, and license plates, faces, and MDTs, or the computer screens, are automatically redacted out. Now they get to choose what they keep and what they don't, but it does provide a really automated feature for that, and then they can also go in and redact any other items in there that they need to as well. The transcription is something that they can hit auto-transcribe on a video, and it will automatically go through and identify all the speakers and attempt to transcribe that video. What's really interesting about that is it's hypermedia-linked, so if they're looking for something where the suspect says knife, they can actually search for the word and it takes them to that portion of the video. So it's a really, really great tool for, and traditionally, something that you don't get, I mean, the whole idea here is that everything's talking to each other, and it's all coming together in Axon Evidence. Axon Performance is part of this as well, I don't always talk about this, but I think it's really important to talk about, what this is, is it is a software platform that's going to make it easy for the department to use their data to ensure compliance with policy. So constantly changing or, you know, adding these bills to say that you have to have policy around body cameras, this is really helpful to make sure that the department is adhering to that. So, you know, with Performance, they'll have a supervisor that navigates through it, gets information that's really easily digestible, and it's going to be automated, so everything's randomized, it's automated, they can review random videos and make sure that they're providing adequate training as well. So this is going to reduce the amount of review time for supervisors, and keeps everything fair for everybody as well. And then one of the last things we'll talk about here is Axon Citizen, so there's two different versions of this, this is really cool, because there's a one-to-one version where an officer can be, let's say, on a scene with somebody, and somebody says, hey, I have cellphone video of this, instead of having to take their phone or go over their shoulder, like I'm sure Chief Smith knows that they've had to do many times, and take your cellphone and like point it at their cellphone, they can actually text them a link, and it creates a false number, so it's not exposing the officer's number, and have all the information put in there automatically, that citizen can then upload it, would to Facebook or anything else into Green Bay's evidence.com account directly, they don't have any access to evidence.com, it just uploads it for them, and then the department can review it quickly, it goes into a triage site. The other way that we see this is Citizen for Communities, and this is a larger scale, so think Packers game, when we can have fans again, right, and we're tailgating and a fight breaks out because they're playing the Bears, and you've got 20-plus people with cellphone videos or pictures of this fight, you can create a link, a custom link for that, put it on social media, which I know you all use often, because I follow it, and say, hey, if you have any video or photos of this incident, please click on this link and submit it for us, and it automatically goes to evidence.com, and that's where they can go in and share it seamlessly with digital, or district attorneys, with your prosecutor's offices, we actually set your prosecutors up with their own free version of this account, which is fantastic, so that they'll get their own copies of all of these videos and their own copies of the cases as well that they're going to be able to create, there's no more discs that have to go back and forth, there's no more flash drives, it is all seamless, and it's all tracked by an audit trail, so it shows chain of custody all the way through. So that's the end of that part, there's one last thing that I did want to touch on very quickly, so I'm going to stop the share on this particular screen, and we have a campaign right now called Sprint for Justice, and it's our way of supporting law enforcement, but also supporting social justice, because we know that that's a big need at this time, so let me share this particular screen. So we have these Sprint for Justice features, we have a few things like Use of Force Dashboard, which is going to give the department a lot more information on their types of use of force and be able to categorize that, peer intervention training on virtual reality, which I touched on briefly with like the PTSD part of that, but what I want to touch on is this Replay Coaching, which is the Officer Self-Review. So Axon as a company is actually in talks with the Packers there, and they are looking to be our first partner for Replay Coaching. So we are looking for NFL teams to come on board and kind of give their, you know, their take on what this does for them when they watch film of themselves, whether it's a good play, a bad play, and how that makes them better. And the idea behind Replay Coaching is that we do the same sort of thing for the officer. And the idea behind replay coaching is that we do the same sort of thing for the officers. They can actually get better at what they do. No longer will they be afraid to put a camera on because they think if they say the wrong thing, they're going to get punished. It's more of a training opportunity for the officers and the community as well. So with that, I've talked enough. And I think Captain Allen is going to follow me up here unless anybody has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer anything.
Any questions from, from the Alders, from Ms. Donahue? Thanks so much for their presentation. Very informative. Alders?
Alder Galvin.
Alder Galvin, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Ms. Donahue. So your company will also have a copy of all of these videos.
So Axon Evidence is housed on Microsoft Azure, which is also the Gov Cloud. So we have zero access to this. This is all your own data. So when I say your own, I mean Green Bay PD's own data. It's on their own site. Think of it as your mobile bank account. I have zero access to it.
Okay. So when the 120 days is up and if evidence has been determined to be destroyed, then it's gone forever, is that correct?
So that's all based on policy and I'll let the department talk about that a little bit, but the way that this works is everything that we're providing here is going to give them unlimited data storage. So they can store anything indefinitely within evidence.com. But based on particular policies or state law and regulation, they'll have certain retention periods set up for certain types of video. Those videos that are ingested into Axon Evidence are going to be tagged with what we call a category and that will be assigned to that retention period. So it will automatically start to purge some videos for them or keep them for extended periods of time. Before anything gets deleted in Axon Evidence, it goes into a deletion queue for seven days. So nothing gets deleted right away. It's all for it goes. And then, oh, go ahead.
But once it's gone, it's gone.
It is. I mean, once they delete it, it is gone. So if there's something that you need to keep for 20 plus years and you want to put that on physical medium, you can. I do have departments that do that. We also have departments that have been on Axon Evidence for 10 years.
Okay. And then as to the equipment, so our department is looking at car cameras, body cameras, new tasers all around. And then also I imagine they'll all have to buy brand new holsters then from, from your company so that it has that, that the system that activates the cameras as soon as they draw their weapon.
No, sir. So a few things to note on that. These are fairly universal, these signal sidearm mounts. They actually go on their existing duty weapon holsters. The other thing to note is that there are upgrades throughout this program. So with the body cameras at year two and a half and year five of the contract, which year five is the end, they're going to get brand new upgraded equipment. That includes the cameras and the docking stations that are utilized for those. And then for the in-car system, we're also going to upgrade that hardware at the end of the five-year contract as well.
Okay. Just to be upfront with you, I used to be a taser instructor for the department like 100 years ago. And so there was a warranty program for the tasers. I mean, and the reason why we have some of the tasers now that are as old as they are is because costs and everything else with rolling them over. But it sounds like you have a better system in place now that's much more cost effective, at least for the department.
Yes, sir. Yeah. And this was actually direct feedback from law enforcement, right? We have enough partners now where we've been able to say, hey, what works best for you when it comes to purchasing this equipment? And we found that purchasing it over a length of time over five years, which by the way, this is not a lease program, we just allow flexible payments for law enforcement over five years. It's in our terms that it's owned from day one. But we, we figured that it was a better pricing model for you all and it just made it a better experience with making sure that the gear is refreshed when it's supposed to be. Because I'm sure being an old taser instructor, you know that there are tasers that are still with the PD that are like 10 plus years old. And our recommended useful life fund, these are five. So we're trying to get into this idea of a five-year replacement cycle and help make that funding a little bit more feasible.
And that, that sounds like what, what you're doing. And I think that'll be a huge benefit for the department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Other questions from the council?
Mayor Gingrich, John Vanderlyes?
Yes, Alder Vanderlyes, go ahead.
I just, I'd like to ask her what it costs to equip one officer with, with the equipment and, and a squad? What would the cost be on one officer and the squad as well?
So we're actually going to save the financial discussion for next week when we take it to the finance committee. So there are a number of different ways to look at this financially and, you know, because we're including so many different things here and there's a lot of moving pieces with the funding aspect of this, we're going to save that conversation for next week and then bring that forward in the following meeting if that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Other questions on the presentation from our council?
I did have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Alder Weary.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Donahue, for the, the presentation and forgive me if you already covered this. Is the camera only activated when the weapon's drawn or can you self-activate it if you, if you feel like you need to record?
Absolutely. So I never take manual activation off the table. There are going to be those times where there's an officer citizen interaction where something hasn't been activated, like the taser, the in-car activation systems or their duty. So never take that off the table. It's a simple double tap of the middle button. It's a recessed button. It's got a nice lip around the outside. So when it's nice and cold up there in Green Bay and they've got gloves on, they can actually feel it, you know? And all of this, by the way, is developed because of voice of customer. We've actually had law enforcement work with us on the development of all of our products and this is all feedback from law enforcement. There's a way to turn lights on and off so that they don't become a target at night and there's no flashing lights like your Iron Man. There's a mute function on these so that they can discuss tactics, but not have a break in the video, which is very important because that can be called into question. So there's a number of things I didn't cover and I'm sorry because it's a lot of detail, but hopefully that helps you.
Perfect. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Alder. Any other questions? All right, with that, we'll go to Captain Allen. Any, any comments from, from you, Captain?
So as chief said, this has been a long process, really starting about five years ago. But then with the events of this year, law enforcement has, has had to change. And one of those big changes that we're seeing really is coming across the country is legislation that's mandating body cams. The latest one was out in New Jersey. One that is almost all the way through and ready to be written into law is in Illinois. So I think one of the big pieces for us is really to get ahead of that process and really show that we are a leader in law enforcement, that we provide our officers in our, our city and our, our community members with the best possible technology that's out there. So we reviewed, like Chief Smith said, were four different body camera systems. And before we started that process, we sat down with our IT staff, some of our SWAT members, other members of the command staff and talked about what's important to us. And as we went through this process and reviewing some of the available systems that were out there, it was very clear to us that Axon came out on top. Our SWAT team, which is comprised of officers from all over the department, from various different positions, were able to utilize the system and test it out for, for a period of time. We found it very valuable and very useful with a lot of the technology that Axon provides. For many years now, the Green Bay Police Department was tasked with investigating critical incidents for the Appleton Police Department. One of the more recent ones was when firefighter Mitch Longard was killed in, in the officer involved shooting. And we were able to utilize their body cameras to investigate that incident. That was a huge part of the investigation and it helped us get through that investigation rather quickly. Appleton, we has had body camera system for about 12 years now. And the last seven to eight years, they have utilized the Axon system. So we're able to partner with them, not only for investigative purposes, but also to go through the system, all the good, bad and ugly of it. And to be quite honest, there was really no bad or ugly about it. The system was, is really a quality system. Not many issues for, not any issues as far as the technology piece goes, the user end of it. We talked from, from the chief down to the patrol guys and they all, they, they love the system. So I think that was one of those big pushes for us, why we were looking at the Axon system.
If I could jump in for one second, Ben. We also looked at the possibility of trying to save as much money as we could and build a system on our own. That means buy a body camera from one of the vendors, use our own IT staff, whether it's Mike Ronic, Jason Baman or any of the other folks you have and build a system ourselves. The problem was for us to build a system and then to build the storage for it or to, connect it to the cloud, we probably would have had to hire additional IT staff just to run that particular system. And after a while, after we looked at it and gave it a hard look, it really didn't seem like it made sense for us to build it ourselves. And again, Axon rose to the top of all the companies that we looked at.
Any final questions from council for either chief, Captain Allen or Ms. Donahue?
Mayor.
Yeah, Alder Stewart, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Lord Chief and Ben, thank you for this and Ms. Donahue, thank you as well. I suppose it's too early to ask, but have you talked about over the last five years when you were looking at this, is there any way to put maybe a little handle on as far as what kind of savings there might be? Ben, you mentioned something about, you know, certain, certain discussions or events that are going on that you can discuss and get through fairly quickly with, with this type of equipment? I suppose it's too early to really tell, but do you have any kind of a, a feel for what kind of time savings there will be for the department that way?
Yep, absolutely. So one of the, one of the key things that really stuck with us when we reviewed some other agencies that have these, complaints on officers went, went down 75% from having body cams. Initially, things kind of stayed the same for agencies that just got body cams. People would come into complain about officer conduct. The supervisor was able to review the video immediately, then review with whoever was, was making a complaint on the officer. And those things just started dropping way down as far as the complaints on officers go. So the word got out that agencies that have these, the, the footage of the incident is caught on camera. So that alone saved a ton of time. Investigative pieces that, like I talked about, the investigations that we do for Appleton PD related to critical incidents. Typically those, those investigations can go on for months, up to two months, three months, depending on what type of investigation it is. In this case, with their officer involved shooting, the investigation was done in less than a month. And one of the key pieces to that was having that body cam footage of the incident right there in front of us to look at. In fact, when we got to Appleton for that incident, within five minutes of walking in the building, they had the video pulled up for us and the investigation started. So there's that, that time saving. You know, when you think about the liability end of things, civil lawsuits, criminal lawsuits, those types of things, and having that footage right in front of us can really put an end to those things rather quickly.
And if I can add to that, Captain, just to help you out, we have studies that were done independently by departments that have deployed body cameras that have actually measured the ROI or return investment here. So it showed the time savings for officers with these complaints like Captain was talking about here. Another thing is, you know, like he said, the litigation time. So I've had departments where they said it took six months to clear somebody for a shooting where it could have taken days with body camera video and they were absolutely certain of that. So if you'd like, I'd be happy to follow up with material to the department to provide to you that have those case studies in there. They are published case, case studies.
I think that would be helpful. And, you know, I think just looking forward, you know, with this type of equipment, you know, as far as how we could delegate officer time and other areas that we need help as well. So I can see some possibilities here. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other questions or comments from council? Well, again, want to thank Ms. Donahue for joining us. Thanks to Chief Smith and Captain Allen, the rest of the command staff for leading this effort. Just to echo Chief Smith's comments, I think the timing is, is right for this step. You know, we'll have the opportunity to get into the financials at a later date, but really appreciate the information that was offered tonight. Looking forward from my point of view into, to acting on the recommendation of, of our police department moving forward, given the, the partnership that we, we are developing with the greecies that have been put in place, as Chief Smith indicated, at the state level and the need. I think there's been, you know, a call from, from our community to community members, but also offers that to our officers as, as Captain Allen indicated. So with that, we will move beyond the presentation, but, but thanks again to our police department and Ms. Donahue from Axon for participating.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now on to a report by the mayor. I'll make this brief because we've got a, a big agenda in front of us. Just hoping everybody from the public and from our council had a happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday. We also had Small Business Saturday and today is, is Giving Tuesday. So just asking, you know, all members of the community to really think about our local small businesses as we move closer to, to Christmas, really focus as much of our buying activities on, on local businesses, on small businesses. It goes without saying that many of them are really struggling, given the, the impact of COVID on our economy and, and some of these businesses. So just calling on everybody to do what we can to, you know, resist the urge to, to buy everything from Amazon and instead, you know, focus our, our buying power locally. As I said, it was, it's also Giving Tuesday today. So it'd encourage people to, to reach out to some of our local nonprofits. Our food banks, food pantries in particular are really being stressed and called upon to meet the needs of some of our more vulnerable residents. So, so to ask council and community to, to take a look at our food pantries, our homeless shelters and all of our, our local nonprofits that are doing really important work, more important than ever this time of year. So with that, I will conclude my report and move along to announcements. Announcements from council. Okay, seeing no announcements, we will move along to appointments. I'll entertain a motion on reappointments.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to confirm the reappointments. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. You guys have it and those reappointments have been approved. On to new appointments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell to confirm the new appointments. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. You guys have it and those new appointments have been confirmed. On to ordinance, a second reading for adoption.
Motion to suspend.
May under suspension of the rules, take up items one and two with a roll call vote.
Back into Alder.
Motion to suspend the rules made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose nay.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stewart to adopt items L1 and L2. We will use the board.
Mayor, I'll, I'll have to make my vote verbal.
And what is that vote, Alder?
That would be aye.
Thank you. And those ordinances are adopted 12-0. On to redevelopment.
Approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve report M, which is the reported redevelopment authority from the meeting on November 20, or November 10, 2020. Any items under this report to be handled separately? None? All in favor approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. You guys have it. Item has been approved. On to protection and policy. On to protection and policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Back end.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LeFave to approve report N, which is the, which are the reports of the Protection and Policy Committee from the meetings on November sixteen and November nineteen, twenty twenty. Any items here to be handled?
Item six.
Item six will be handled separately. Any others? Hearing none. Others, all in favor approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. You guys have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. The item was pulled, I believe, by Alder Weary. Alder, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could be wrong, but I think some people here would like to speak to this, so I make a motion to open the floor.
Second.
Motion to open the floor made by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Before we move to that vote, you know, I had the opportunity, like many of you on council, I think, to witness a lot of the testimony offered on this item. I certainly didn't, you know, have the chance to sit through all of it, but I know that many have. I sat through several hours myself. I think in total, there were between nine and ten hours of testimony offered on both sides on this issue. I think a lot of good work was done at the committee level, thanks to Alder Storey and members of our committee for wading through comments on both sides of this question. So, I believe that, you know, we've had a pretty robust discussion on this item, but obviously, this is something for council to determine whether or not we open the floor. So, having said that, I will go to our council president, Alder Brunet, and our council vice president, Alder Dorf, for some comments on this question as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And you are correct. I think it's up to each alder to, you know, vote yes or no on opening the floor. I almost always vote for opening the floor to hear from interested parties because that's who we report to, that who owns the city of Green Bay government. We have to be understanding of hearing those voices. But on this particular issue, I'm going to vote against opening the floor, just for the very reason that, you know, I've listened to hours of the testimony, I've reviewed all of the documents, I received hundreds of emails on this, received comments from constituents. I really don't know what more public input we will receive that will change opinions. I could be wrong, you know, each alder needs to vote for what they believe, but I don't know. We've really litigated this to a great degree, and I'm going to vote against opening the floor to hear from the public.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Dorf?
Thank you, Mayor. And I will have to concur with Alder Brunet. We have, I have personally attended hours and hours of communications. All alders had that opportunity. And if they weren't able to be there right in, as it was live, they had the opportunity to watch all of this evidence and this testimony at their leisure. I've received emails on a daily basis for months. I have enough information from the public right now, and I am going to also vote against opening the floor. Normally, I would not vote against opening the floor, but in this situation, I believe I have heard all I need to hear and have had the opportunity to hear all I need to hear. So, I will be voting against opening the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other comments on this question of opening the floor?
I originally had the floor, so.
Yeah, Alder Weary, go ahead.
Thank you. I would just remind everyone, there are people here who now going on an hour waited to speak to this item. This is still the United States where people can speak before their representative body. Yes, they may have come before the committee. Some might not have. Maybe this is where they held their comments for, because they know this is where the ultimate decision will be made. I would be ashamed, very ashamed, if we don't open the floor. It would be a sad day if people show up for our meeting. I wish we were in city council right now and not virtually, so that you could look into the audience and tell them, thanks for coming, go home now. So, just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Yes, I'm not for opening the floor either. This has been vetted to death. And I also, I'm going to it now, but I believe it's extremely inappropriate that this is even before our council. This is not something we should be hearing. This is a matter of science for scientists, not legislators, not courts. And I cannot believe that there's going to be any comment from everyone that hasn't been heard already. It's, there's how many hours of testimony given at Protection and Policy? They had how many extra meetings to accommodate people? I just see no reason to drag this out any further and believe the whole proceeding is I can go into that later. I see no reason to open the floor at all. Thank you.
I'm ready.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on this question?
Mayor Greenwich?
Alder, yes, go ahead.
I'm in favor of opening the floor. I think the public has a right to air their grievances or their concerns, and I think that's where we can do it. Opening the floor gives them a chance to be part of our government. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Storey.
I guess the question I have is, I mean, as far as what we're voting on, whether it's fluoride or not, or if it's received in place on file, I guess I just want to make sure that, you know, legal could tell us exactly what we would be
Yeah, I mean, the item before us currently is to receive in place on file the request of Alda Galvin.
So. So, that's it. Okay.
Yep, the question that we're obviously, you know, discussing right now is opening the floor.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments from council?
Please record the votes. Everybody can see appropriately how their people.
Yep, absolutely. Request for recorded vote has been
pro-democracy.
Made, and we will record the vote. So, please use the board. And this, again, is a question whether or not we will open the floor to public comment. An aye vote opens the floor, a no vote keeps it closed.
Why wouldn't it even be questioned? Crazy. People get keel-hauled for less than half.
Mayor, my vote will be an aye. Alder Vanarlyce will be aye to open the floor.
Thanks, Alder. That motion fails six to six to open the floor. So, we're on
Open the floor.
We're on receiving place on file. Alder Weary?
Thank you. I'm very disappointed in that vote. I hope everybody remembers that at election time. People can show up and voice their opinion at this meeting, and you just denied them of that. That's disgusting. Now, getting on to the commentary here, if, I mean, we can still handle the item, we don't have to receive it and place it on file. My commentary will be, like everyone here, I mean, I think this is my third time voting on fluoride, so it's certainly not new to it. Like everyone here, we've all been inundated with studies, counter-studies, evidence of every kind. Some of the discussion and debate was pretty fiery and lively, which is good for democracy. Obviously, water is essential for us to survive. The water utility's purpose in providing water to the community is to avoid patchwork of wells, some of which weren't reliable or safe. We needed clean, cheap, reliable water. Our goal in providing water should be very simple, much like the doctor, to do no harm. Provide water. Once we start adding anything, we are indeed starting to play doctor. We are administering, we are administering a treatment to everyone, regardless if they need it or not. If that's the case, why not add vitamin D? Very good for you. A lot of people are deficient. It would do most people good. How about probiotics? Throw some of that in there, give some antidepressants, you know, during the COVID times, start doing a little cocktail in our water. Why not? Fluoride can be detrimental to infants or people with thyroid issues. What about those who drink far more water than others, or those myriad of fluoride products in addition to fluoridated water? Since we are now the doctor, giving people a prescription of fluoride, which they didn't ask for, and many don't need, are we monitoring their health and effects of fluoride? Of course not. Of course not. We're just hoping for the best, I guess. I believe the decision to use fluoride should be up to each individual. Most probably don't even know it's in their water. If dentists are concerned cavities, about cavities, then step up their game and expand programs in the community. Perhaps use the money spent on fluoride for dental wellness. Everyone I know has access to fluoridated toothpaste and other items. Let people decide for themselves how to care for their teeth. It's time to remove the fluoride and take the do no harm approach with water, the basic thing of life. And let's not do the it most likely does no harm in most people mantra. So, who are we to play doctor with such a basic requirement, water? I would say that we not receive in place on file, vote against that, and then we can truly discuss what we should, what we should do with fluoride. Once again, I'm ashamed of this council for not opening the floor.
It's all there. Other comments? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I do.
Alder Stevens and then Alder Scannell.
Regarding Alder Weary's comments, I'm kind of taken back from that. I went through every single meeting, and I have listened to everybody talk, each side of the scenario. And he has the right to state that we didn't open the floor. I chose not to open the floor. I already listened to everybody through protection and policy. So, I kind of take it back by his comments. They're being made towards this common council.
Thank you, Alder Stevens. Alder Scannell?
Yes, I will dig a little deeper into why this is, should never have even come before us. This is not a matter of legislation. This is a matter of science. We are not scientists. This is grossly inappropriate to be bringing this to us. If you believe fluoride is wrong, you take your case to the CDC, which anti-fluoride people have been doing for years and years and years, a decade, and they still haven't I'm not a scientist. I am not qualified to make any decision here. This decision was made in the thirties to add fluoride for health purposes. The CDC considers it one of the ten modern, best medical things that has happened. And I'm sure they're taking evidence from the condition of people's teeth before then. And it's a whole different world. Certainly, things have changed, and maybe there's an argument to be made to, as they've done in Europe, where it's a personal choice, and fluoride is put in other products. That is not something we can do at this level. People who want to follow that need to take their game to a different body that can do that. At this level, all we can do is follow the science. And science, I believe in science. Science is a methodology. You have an hypothesis. You conduct an experiment. You take the results, and then you weigh how your hypothesis came through, and then you peer review that. And peer review is through the bodies of organized science, the CDC, the EPA, the AMA, all the alphabet suits. That's the authority we should be following. That is science. Anything else is anti-science. That's not science. To cherry pick your scientist, oh, I like this study, this nice, this scientist over here, that is not science. For those who are anti-fluoride, and you have a medical body, you have the knowledge behind you, the degrees, shame on you. What are you doing bringing this to us? This should be going, you should be going to the CDC, the EPA. That's where your fight is, not with us. And for all those citizens who are jumping on board this, I don't understand what you're doing. It's such a waste of your time, your talent, your intellect, your energy. You're not a scientist either. We should not care. As citizens, we should not care what the science is. We should be following the organized bodies of science recommendations, which our water utility manager is well on top of and will bring to us the moment there is anything that needs to be concerned for us to act on as legislators. This is just a waste of everyone's time, and we've done this how many times now? I will be putting in a communication, in an email tomorrow, so we don't have to pay for it, hopefully providing future alders some guidance on this topic, so they don't want to have to keep doing this over and over. It's just wrong. I mean, I've been thinking a lot about this job as an alder, the expectations that we should be putting on alders. And expecting an alder to play scientist is just flat out wrong. It's like asking me to fix your car, to fix the roads. That's not appropriate. This is not an appropriate item to come before us. It's just not. This is a matter of science. And then you take the scientist, duke it out, and when they get it all worked out, then we can act on what they decide. And what they have decided for decade after decade, after year after year, is that there is a benefit to fluoride, and the only debit is to with fluoresces, which is unfortunate, but considered the benefit. You got to weigh your pros and cons. I don't think it's worth taking fluoride out of the water. So, I'm totally against this item. I'm hoping we're never seeing this again. It's just, I believe, wrong to bring this to us. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor Greenwich, I'd like to make a comment.
Alder Vanarlyce? Yep, go ahead.
This item is before us for a reason. This is our job to vote on it. We heard all, we heard all the arguments on both sides, and I'm not for putting this receive in place on file. I think we should, we should take this to a vote. I heard all the, all the information that was given from both sides. I don't support adding fluoride to the water. I've talked to a number of dentists. I've talked to a number of people that are on, you know, in the science community. And basically, it's in front of our city council for a reason. We're going to vote it up or down. In other words, we either want fluoride or we don't. I'm not supporting fluoride. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Other comments?
Mayor, I yes, thank you. I'm not sure if Ms. Chavez, the city attorney, is on the line, or if Joanna or someone else from the city legal staff is on the line, but that's my question to that person would be, what exactly, the motion on the floor is to receive and for now, would basically end it. It doesn't mean it's going to never come up where it won't pick another avenue to get there. That's my question for the city attorney's office is, I mean, is it a simple vote of, hey, we decide as a council to remove fluoride from drinking water? Or is there more legality that we need to consider? Because I believe that the motion that passed the committee was kind of done under the pretense that there's some litigation or court case, or some legal ruling in the future that might change what we're able to do? Could you comment?
Sure. So, yeah, yep. So, with respect to fluoridation, my understanding is the city's decision to fluoridate the water was done by resolution. So, any action to reverse that would also be done by resolution. As far as the action taken at Protection and Policy, the committee's discussion led towards the decision that they wanted to essentially keep the status quo and not make any changes to the current fluoridation process in the city's water. Accordingly, the recommendation was to receive in place on file. As far as pending court cases, my understanding of that is that that is a court case that is pending in Northern California and would not have any jurisdictional precedence over the state of Wisconsin and over the city of Green Bay. Whether other cases come up in the state, and other litigation comes up, that would be a different situation. And if there are federal rulings that do apply to us, and that precedent does, is applicable to us, then at that point, a resolution that currently stands fluoridating the water would not be effective any longer, and you would have to abide by whatever guidelines the EPA or other federal agencies provide, or federal courts, or state courts provide.
If this, if this motion to receive in place on file passes, it's possible that the group who's wishing, or the people or individuals or groups, you name it, who are in favor of removing the fluoride, could they pursue another avenue to get there outside of the city council? Like, could they go to public referendum? Could they put it before this body to consider a public referendum?
There certainly are options of public referendum for citizens to put forth to council. Whether or not that is applicable to this particular issue, I can't speak to that.
Okay, that's fine. That's fair. I guess my point is Uh, the, the, I guess my point is, you know, I don't take, uh, this vote lightly to not open the floor. I really don't. I think I've never done that. Uh, and I'm getting to the motion, Mayor, but, um, so I, I understand where you're coming from, Alder Manwery, but we have 50 attachments to the agenda item, multiple viewpoints. We received hundreds of emails, all the different speakers at the committee level. To, to make a decision on something like this, that's as divisive of an issue and then to explain it to the entire city that as a body of 12, we made this decision, it's hard, it's hard to make that decision because the two sides seem to be at odds. And I don't quite go as far as where Alder Scannell went with his, uh, frustration with the issue, but am I the qualified person to make this? It's a matter of public consumption and almost to the point where it should go to public referendum and I'd be in favor of that. The public should be able to decide this, not necessarily a body of 12. Of course, the argument goes enough about this issue to make that vote. Well, if I'm saying that I know enough to make that decision, I certainly would trust the public to make that, this, um, decision through direct democracy. So this doesn't die, our motion to receive and place the file, if that's what the vote is, it doesn't necessarily kill it in the end. But we got to look at the, at Alder Galvin's request. He filed on behalf of a constituent that the city consider taking fluoride out of the treatment process for city water. I think we considered that. Um, but I, I'm not at the point now where I can overturn, you know, 50 or so reputable organizations. We received a letter late today from the Oneida Nation and their health department in support, uh, through their chairman and so I'm not an ignorant person. I'm not being dismissive or not ignoring the really pressing issue of the time. If we're putting things into our body that don't belong there, I take that seriously. I don't, I'm not at the point now where I can say I know more about this issue than the majority of the public. So my vote would be to receive and place on file, fully acknowledging that I don't know if this will be the end of this, if this group is really active and pursue a different avenue to make it work, but I'm not comfortable removing fluoride at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Gerlach?
Thank you. Um, I have to say that, uh, Alder Scannell's speech really kind of, um, sounded like it was directed at me. So I'm going to, I'm going to go for it. I think what, uh, Alda Brunet said too, made me feel like I need to speak out because in spite of my age, I am the junior alder here and I might be the only one who's never, um, been through this before. So I would like to share with my colleagues how I went about this and by now they will not be surprised to know that I did my homework. I have spent hours and hours and hours studying this over the past few months and I have attended all of the testimony. I've listened to everything people had to say. I took a phone call at home today and listened and followed up on the study that the man wanted me to, uh, read. I've received all those emails everyone else received. We were told in those emails, follow the science, not the lobbyists and not the politicians. And I have to tell you, I was rather, uh, surprised that sometimes I received the same email from 10 different people and it was the very same email. And then I received a different one from eight different people. And, um, I, some of them started out by, I live in your district, I am your constituent. Rolled down and looked at their, their address and none of them lived in my district. And some of them I responded to and I said, I'm sorry, I'm not your alder. Perhaps it's Alder Scannell, it might be Alder Galvin. Nobody responded to me. Uh, there was one woman who sent, uh, an email that named five specific studies that I should read. So I emailed her back and I said, please send me the links to those studies so I can read them. She sent me the links. Every single one of them went to the same website, fluoridealert.org. There was a whole list of studies. They seemed to be hyperlinked. I tried to read them. Not one link worked. I couldn't read them. And then I wondered whether she had read them. There was another gentleman who sent us an email. I'm assuming everyone got the same email as I got. And he said, there are all these very prestigious organizations supporting our movement to end fluoridation of water and you should check them out. And so I did. So one of them is the Center for Health, Environment and Justice. And their stated mission on their website is, quote, "to train and support local activists across the country and build initiatives that win on issues." Folks, that ain't science. Um, the Environmental Working Group says on their website, "We drive consumer choice and civic action." That ain't science. Uh, there's one called the Institute of Neurotoxicology and Neurodisorders. And their stated goal was to distribute scientific information. So I was really interested in that one. And as I explored the website, I found out it's just a website of one Dr. Steven Gilbert, who's marketing the books he's written. One paperback cost $46. Uh, there's another one that I was told supports this movement, the American Academy of Environmental Medicine. And they have published positions against water fluoridation. They've also published positions against wireless radio frequency radiation in schools, electromagnetic fields, genetically modified foods, chemical sensitivity, molds and mycotoxins, mercury and more. And then finally I was, uh, told to check out the International Academy of Oral Medicine and Toxicology. And I did, I checked out their website and I found on their website a store where I could actually order brochures against fluoridation. I could even order anti-fluoride T-shirts. I could have business cards printed. And I suppose say I am whoever I want to say I am. There was one person who sent an email about, um, how Dr. Christine Till, whose work regarding the negative effect of fluoride on the IQ of young children is being demonized for her work. And I did some research. I found that researchers from six countries have written her university, which is not in the United States, to complain that they cannot even attempt to replicate her study because she will not offer up a complete data set. They asked, and I will quote them, they asked in their letter whether ideology is being misrepresented as science, affecting public health and harming the reputation of your university. And there was another person who sent me a passionate email about what the civil rights leaders say about fluoridation. And I'm thinking, that ain't science. That's politics. That's philosophy. And finally, we were encouraged to take the advice about fluoride from Nobel laureate, Dr. Arvid Carlsson. That's one of the more recent emails I received. So I checked him out. Dr. Arvid Carlsson is a Swedish neuropharmacologist who won his Nobel Prize in 2000 for his work on dopamine and its effects on Parkinson's disease. Um, we've heard a lot from Dr. Johnny Johnson. He is the pediatric dentist and he's a member of the American Board of Pediatric Dentistry. And he pointed out that in the late 1950s, most Americans aged 65 or older had lost all their teeth because of tooth decay. And he says, the portion of seniors with complete tooth loss has dropped by 70%. And so I would like to end by telling you, my life, uh, experience, I was born in 1949. None of my grandparents had teeth. All my grandparents put their teeth in a cup of water when they went to bed at night. Now, I was raised out in, um, uh, the country and, uh, we had our own private well. We did not have fluoride. Appleton had fluoridated water. Green Bay had fluoridated water. We didn't. By the time I graduated from college, I had a cavity filled in every single tooth. My children were raised on military installations around the continental United States, all with fluoridated water, and they were raised in Green Bay. When my children graduated from college, each one had had one cavity. I really believe that I have lived the value of fluoridated water and I have found that many of the studies quoted have experimented with very high levels of fluoride and have had extreme, uh, I would say disqualifying facts about their studies. I think maybe we've been snuckered. And so that's the report of the person who has never done this before, did my homework, and I think I would absolutely feel comfortable voting to keep our community water fluoridation program.
Thank you so much, Alder, for that work and for those comments. Alder Dorf?
Thank you, Chair. I really, it's hard to follow up after that. Um, Alder Gerlach and I have talked about this a little bit and she just did a fabulous job of, of explaining, um, some of the, the things that she found and, and that I also found in doing the research. Um, having attended personally those hours and hours of meetings that other alders did not attend and even criticize those of us who did attend at, at this meeting for not opening the floor, they really should have been at these meetings where they could have heard these things and asked the questions because that is what committee meetings are for. Um, uh, Alder Gerlach, you did a fabulous job. Thank you so much for sharing that.
Thanks.
Mayor?
Thank you, Alder. Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I've been kind of holding off on comments. I, I chair the PNP media, uh, committee, so I was at every minute of every meeting. Some people might like or dislike the fact that I tried to be as democratic as I could be. I opened the floor to everybody. I tried to remain transparent. I could have very easily have cut meetings short or just got to the point. I guess what I wanted to do is allow folks to speak and do what they believe in with, as far as fluoride goes. You know, I've dealt with this in 2013, 2017 and now 2020. There is a court case going on, as was mentioned, and, uh, we looked at every other alternative. You know, Alda Brunet brought something up as far as a referendum. We had talked about that and I, I approached both sides on that and they both kind of poo-pooed the idea because how many people are going to take the time to go through the 2,160 pages that's on our agenda tonight? Or all these reports right here? I've got many that I printed up and Alda Gerlach probably read most of them. So I've read them too. I've read them too. And it really gets down to the point where you look in the mirror and you say, what is right? What isn't? What do you believe in? I agree with Alder Scannell in the sense that, you know, scientists, we are not doctors, we are not attorneys, and they throw it at us. It seems like locally, we as alders, it's been tremendous as far as the amount of things and issues that we have to deal with that we didn't really deal with years ago. You know, I mean, people, people have to remember that fluoride is just one issue that we as alders look at. There's, there's another 60 issues that we've dealt with this year or more. Put our time in. And whether you agree with us or not that we vote yes or no on, on this topic, we did our homework and you can't fault us for that. So, you know, the court case in Northern California might not hold sway over us. If the courts ever tell us that you got to take fluoride out of the water, we have no choice. And I, I think when our committee voted three to one, that was kind of the impetus that we, we, we came up with, that if the courts decide differently, we'll go that route. But I kind of accord it to being a coach at a football game, throwing out the red flag, you know, checking out, you know, is there enough information there to overturn how we feel and believe on this? And I can't fully be convinced that there is. So I don't know how we're going to have to vote on this, but, um, I voted to open the floor, even though it's suicidal for me in a sense, because I've gone through it too much. But we are public servants and I've, and I've tried to maintain the same setup in my meetings as I am in council, so I'm okay with that. But if it doesn't pass that we don't open up the floor, I'm fine with that as well. So I said my two cents and, um, I'll move on. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any additional questions or comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Aldo LeFave?
Yes, I'm also on the, uh, protection and policy. And I had went through all the testimony and emails and I got, uh, some different emails sent to me and I checked some of the people out. And I found out there were reliable people on the other side too, both sides. And that's the problem. Try to go through this and try to make sense of it. Yeah, I'm not a scientist, but I'm not a scientist. I don't have this type of background. So at the, uh, protection policy, I went along with, uh, receiving and placing on file because I was so conflicted. I didn't know really in a way how to vote on this. Because I have, I have a question. I wonder, how can we put fluoride in the water for, uh, one size fits all? I do believe that children are more susceptible because infants, they consume more water than a lot of people, adults would consume the water. So I do, I had, um, I had qualms with that. Yet I didn't see anything that was, for the amount that we put in, in a lot of these studies, uh, I think the amount was higher. And that's where I had the problem. And I do know there are some studies out there and that case out in California, the judge, just in one thing that he didn't put it as a, um, a ruling, but he did mention from some of the, from the information that he was receiving, the testimony, that he felt that it looks like the EPA should take a second look. And that's, I think, what we need because remember with smoking, how long did it take for us to finally realize the, the really bad effects of smoking, even secondhand smoke? And remember back in the 50s, 40s and 50s, I believe it was, doctors were promoting smoking because it was communal. So this is something that we have to, I think it does have to be looked at, but right now, oh, I'm really conflicted. And I do say, one study that I found, it was the Harvard study, um, in their, um, what was it called? Healthy something. Anyway, they had two charts. And the one showed the countries that do fluorinate their water and the ones that do not. And the majority of them are in Europe. There were, um, 17 European countries. And then there was Mexico, I think it was Greece and let's see if I know what the other one. And the fluorinated countries, all the cavities came down, lots of tooth cavities and that came, it all came down. And then the unfluorinated countries, all the cases came down. Only one went up, starting to go back up and that was Mexico. So I was trying to think, well, why are theirs going down? Cause they don't fluorinate. They never did. And if you think of, uh, Europe, they get one of the best, uh, healthcare systems. And they also have, um, health issues, initiatives that they put out. I know Scotland, I believe, has one. They do not fluorinate. And what they do is they have a program where they teach the children in the school how to brush their teeth properly. So they use the fluoride that way directly onto the teeth. And they talk about healthy eating. This is something we don't do here and I don't know how we can, Green Bay can't do it. We don't have the money to do a program like that. But this is something I think that has to be, uh, taken into account. We eat sugar like crazy in the United States. You go to the grocery store, you go down the cereal aisle. A good share of the cereal to, they, candy aisle, the cookie aisle. It's bigger than our fruits and vegetable area. I think a lot of it has to do with that. And we could reduce some of this. Um, but right now, I'm going to say that too. I'm still a little conflicted on everything, but I think we can't do what Europe's doing. So I'm going to, I do believe that we do need some more definitive testing studies done. And maybe we'll come up to the, um, the realization that maybe the fluoride is not right to put it in our water. There's a better way we can do it, but we're not there yet. So, okay, thank you. That's all I got to say.
Thanks, Alder. Any final comments on this question of receiving and placing this item on file?
Mr. Mayor?
Alder Wery, for a second time.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. I'm not going to go into all the debate on, on fluoride, obviously, because it could take a long time. long time. We don't want to listen to the people who showed up. So the science is not clear. It's not. It's not a 100% clear. Anybody who says it is, you know, isn't telling the truth. There's a lot out there that would beg to differ if you would look for it. My last thing is, besides having us use the board on this vote, I did want to apologize to those who wanted to speak, to those who showed up. And I've been on the council since 2002, minus a short time. I'm trying to remember a time we didn't open the floor, and we had some really, really contentious issues that we really didn't want to hear again. We heard them over and over and over, but people took the time out of their life to show up and be a part of our democracy, our republic, and speak, and we opened the floor. And so just moving forward, remember that. You know, you could be you on the other side next time, you know, for whatever reason you couldn't make it to committee, or there's a new point you wanted to make. Go to council. We always say at committee, hey, you know what? What we do here at committee goes to council. There's your chance to make your final case. I guess now protection and policy or some of these other committees, you can't say that. You're going to have to tell them, we might not open the floor. So I apologize. You know, the council, obviously, I hate to say it, maybe too arrogant or too lazy or both, they want to listen to you. So with that, let's use the board.
Thanks, Alda. If there aren't any final comments, we will do a recorded vote. Alda Scannell.
Yes, I would just like to bring up that I would not support a referendum on this either since that was brought up. Science is not a democracy. That's my biggest gripe here and why this whole thing is inappropriate before us and why this should just be cleared off the table as quickly as possible. Science is not a democracy. Science is a process. And the process is, you take your study to those bodies and you argue it there. They've done that, and they've lost, if losing is the way to look at it. They haven't made their case. And so they're doing an end around, going to courts and legislators, and that's shameful. That is wrong. That is not science. Anyone who believes in science, this is an easy vote. Because the science, the EPA, the bodies of science, the science without which science doesn't exist, it's just cherry picking. You follow whatever scientist you like. The EPA, the CDC, all those say we should be fluoridating our water. And to go against that is to go against science, no matter what you say. That is science. There's a process, and the process isn't legislating it because you don't make your case against the science bodies. So I would be against a referendum or ever seeing this come to any council or court again. It's just not appropriate. This is a matter of science. You take it to the scientific community, you battle it out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Alda. We do have a motion and a second to receive and place this item on file. There's been a request to use a recorded vote, which we will do.
What about opening the floor?
We already discussed that, Alda, and that motion failed. Yeah, the question is receiving and placing on file.
Mr. Mayor, just for, because it flashed down there really, really quickly. I think it was a six-six tie, so you voted not to open the floor?
Yeah, the motion failed. Six to six.
All right, thank you.
So we will use the board.
Mayor, my vote would be nay.
May? Thank you.
Alda Vanderleest.
Thanks, Alda. So the motion succeeds, nine to three, to receive and place that item on file. On to the reported protection policy committee granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alda Vanderly, seconded by Alda Stevens to approve report O, which is the report of the Protection Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Any names you'd like to be recorded as abstaining? Any names to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The report has been approved. Plan Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Alda Corpus Dax, seconded by Alda Scannell to approve report P, which is the report of the Plan Commission from the meeting on November 23, 2020.
One and two.
Items one and two will be handled separately. Any others? Hearing none, others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. You guys have it, the report has been approved, with the exception of items one and two. Your wishes on item one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alda Scannell, seconded by Alda Corpus Dax. Item pulled by Alda Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My motion is going to be the same for both of these three. Refer back. It's not really time sensitive in any way. More residents wish to weigh in. It was during a holiday time, hunting time, there were a bunch of people couldn't make it, and there's some additional information. Really nothing time sensitive about it. We could refer back.
Motion has been made to refer the item back by Alda Weary, seconded by Alda Scannell. This is just on item one, so we'll do a separate vote on item two, but all in favor of referring back will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Before we go to the vote, Alda Corpus Dax.
So is it, Alda Weary, are you looking for an ex, like, right now we have it set that they're under this condition for six months? Are you looking to extend?
No, not necessarily. I think just that the fact that several residents didn't have a chance to, and they have some information that didn't come up at committee, and they wanted to perhaps look at a different option. And there really are two different addresses, so.
Okay. I mean, are they here tonight that they're interested in speaking? Open the floor.
We can ask. You know, I don't know, they might have been scared off by, you know, people not being allowed to talk earlier, so I don't know.
Are there any residences here that are?
I told them we would refer it back and just talk about it. They might have stuck through it. They knew the fluoride issue was going to be first, so.
Okay.
And we do have a motion and a second to refer the item back, item one back to committee or Plan Commission. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You guys have it, the item's been referred back. Item two, Alda Weary.
It's the same motion to refer back, same reasons. It's two parties.
Motion made to refer this item back to the Plan Commission, seconded by Alda Scannell. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You guys have it. Motion succeeds. On to Finance Committee.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made by Alda Dorf, seconded by Alda Corpus Dax to approve report Q, which is the report of the Finance Committee from the meeting on November 17, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You guys have it, the report has been approved. Report to the Park Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alda Scannell, seconded by Alda Stevens to approve report R, which is the report of the Park Committee from the meeting on November 18, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You guys have it, the report has been approved. TB and P.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alda Corpus Dax, seconded by Alda Galvin to approve report S, which is the report of the Traffic, Bicycle, and Pedestrian Commission from the meeting on November 16, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You guys have it, the report has been approved. Economic Development Authority.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion made by Alda Scannell, seconded by Alda Corpus Dax to approve report T, which is the report of the Economic Development Authority from the meeting on November 9, 2020. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that report, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You guys have it, that report has been approved. On to the Ethics Board. And before we get into this item, I just want to go to Attorney Bungert, who can give us a little bit of an overview, a description for council and the public, so that we have a good understanding of what's in front of us tonight.
Yes, hi. So following the filing of the Ethics Board's findings and conclusions, the clerkship received a filing of written objections presented by the petitioner, which is allowed under our ethics code. Either party has the ability and the opportunity to file written objections and to present arguments in support of those objections to the council. So with that written objection filing, the recommendation with these items at this point would be to hold to the January meeting in order to prepare, in order for the parties to be able to prepare their arguments, and then also a decision is left to council to decide whether it wants to hear those arguments. So these are arguments in support or in opposition to the objection itself, whether they want to hear those orally or written or both. So that would be the recommended action this evening, to hold and to decide how council wants to hear those arguments presented to it.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Bungert. With that, we'll go to Alda Galvin, who does serve on the Ethics Board, not to get into the substance of the issue, but to weigh in on the question that Attorney Bungert posed for council.
Exactly. And if anyone's looked through the minutes of the meetings, those ethics meetings, and then the facts and conclusions that were made, it was not an easy decision for us, meetings to get all the information from the attorneys and to sift through it and decide what we did. My recommendation would be, based on everything that we went through, I think it would be in our best interest if we had the interested parties submit written arguments, say, receive them by the 13th of January, so that they could be submitted to us in time for our meeting on the 19th. And then I would also strongly recommend that you go through the audio and video, or at least read through the conclusions and findings of facts that we came up with as you review them. I think it would be a lot easier than listening to the back and forth of the verbal arguments. I think it's just gives you a better chance to go back and forth when you have it in writing, as opposed to having it orally, and then I think it'd probably take us a whole nother meeting to sift through the written and then try and come to a conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Alda. Is that a motion?
Yeah, that would be my motion.
Very good. Is there a second for Alda Galvin's motion?
Second.
Second by Alda Dorf. Discussion.
Yep.
Alda Weary, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the attorney, perhaps, there I have a statement from Wendy Coriel, who was a named witness without her consent, and she had wanted me to read this tonight. Would it be appropriate tonight, or would it be appropriate to write into committee? She wants her name removed from the complaint because she did not give, didn't even know about it.
That would be most appropriate at the time when council is actually considering the substance of the report and the findings, the facts, and conclusions of law that are being presented by the Ethics Board.
Okay, so I will hang on to this for that time. Thank you.
Thanks, Alda. Other comments on the motion?
Alda Gerlach.
Alda Gerlach?
I have a question. I'm so confused, I'm sorry. Maybe you could just explain this to me. I'm reading in the agenda that number one says to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions, and number two says to dismiss the ethics complaint. And I did read what was in the packet, so I do feel like I was able to follow. It was quite long, but I did read it, and I thought I understood it. I don't understand what you're talking about now as far as listening in January. I just don't understand.
Yeah. If you could just go over that again real briefly?
Yeah. So essentially, what you're voting on right now is to hold action on both of those items to the January meeting in light of the fact that a written objection was filed by the petitioner to those findings of fact and conclusions of law. So he is objecting to the Ethics Board's report and recommendation, which he has a right to do under the ethics code. Also, in conjunction with that, he has a right to present arguments to the council in support of these files this morning. So that is why staff is recommending, in order for those arguments to be presented in written fashion, as the council is electing to do, and for the parties to be able to prepare those arguments and present to council, we are holding the item to January and having them submit their arguments in support of the written objection or in opposition to the objection.
And that is because the objections just came in this morning? Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thanks, Attorney Bungert. Thanks, Alda. Any further comments or questions?
Mayor?
Alda LeFave.
Yes, I will vote to hold this over till January, but that's one of my issues, that we are dragging these things out. And I did mention that to the Law Department, that when they do read, they're redoing the code, the ethics code, and I believe that we need to move this stuff along. It's dragging things out for these alders, and sometimes it drags into the next election, and this could hurt someone that maybe, I mean, people take it differently, and it might hurt somebody. So that's why I do object sometimes to this being dragged out. So right now, I guess I will go along with holding it.
Thank you, Alda. Any final comments?
Mayor?
Mayor Gingrich, Alda Vanderleest.
Alda Vanderleest, go ahead.
I accept what one and two says to dismiss the ethics complaint against Alda Vanderleest. And I'm thinking that, you know, they had enough time to look it all over, and I think that what they're presenting and, you know, how they're going about it is, in other words, they want to, in other words, move forward, and in other words, they voted to dismiss it, and I think that's, you know, that's fine. You know, dismiss it and let's move on. The website is down. There's nothing on the website, and any constituents that want to, you know, call me or talk to me about any issue, all they have to do is call me. And basically, the site has been removed, and that's it. You know, there's no real, there's no activity on the site or anything like that, and anybody that wants to...
Alda, Alda, just, you know, I understand your position on this, but we just want to make the point that the motion in front of us is to hold these items until the January 19th meeting and accept written comments in regard to that objection. That's a part of our ethics code, and in light of the fact that we received this objection, this is what's being recommended by our Law Department.
I'm not, you know, willing to accept it, so I'm going to vote nay on that. Write me down as a nay as far as, I'm thinking the findings that are on one and two, and that's fine with me, so I'm not supporting that.
Okay, understood.
Mayor?
Alda Galvin.
Yeah, just for Alda LeFave, and maybe I misunderstood the thrust of what she was saying, but the amount of time it took for this case to move through the system was in no way a fault of the Law Department or anything else. It was merely that Alda Vanderleest's attorney and the complainant had the right to make their case, which took several days to do it and to do the written briefs that were required, so that they could be reviewed and case law on that could be taken into consideration. So in this instance, this had nothing to do with the Law Department or the way the ethics code is written or anything else like that. It was just, any other kind of case like this, it would have taken this time or the amount of time or longer. Thank you.
Thanks, Alda.
Mayor?
Alda Scannell.
Do we need to decide right now also whether we want to hear written, oral, or both?
Yeah, so Alda Galvin has made the motion to accept written comments.
Okay, good. All right. Has it been seconded?
It has been, yep.
Okay, good.
Alda LeFave, for a second time?
Yes, I just want to say, no, no, I don't fall to anybody with this, you know, it's because the way the code is written, and I just... It's because the way the code is written, and I just wanted to say that, um, sometimes, not always, but sometimes it drags out too much, and we have to tighten it up, I, I believe, just to move things along. That's all I wanted to say. I do not fault anybody. Um, it's the way the code is written, and the Law Department, you know, followed the, uh, the code and the rules, and no, I do not fault anybody on that.
Okay, thank you, Alder. So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. The motion is to hold these items till our January 19 meeting, accept written comments by January 13 at 5:00 PM. Uh, that motion has a second. If there isn't any further debate, we will go to the vote. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay?
Nay.
The eyes have it, and these items are held for our January 19 meeting. Report of Sustainability Commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell to approve Report B, which is the report of the Sustainability Commission from the meeting on November 19, 2020. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it, that report has been approved. Receiving place on file?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
Motion by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stor to receive and place on file the Municipal Court Report for October 2020. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it, report has been received and placed on file. Petitions and communications?
Mayor?
Alder Lefave?
Yes, I have one for parks. After my meeting this morning with, um, Dave Hanson with the Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian, uh, Lieutenant, I'm not sure if I can say his name right, it's S-O-B-I-E-C-K with the Police Department, and Justin Lindsmeyer with, um, Parking. It came to that there was no good solution to the parking issue on Smith Street in the 1500 block. So I am now requesting that the parks put the replacement and relocation of the playground equipment and splash pad at Farland Park on next year's replacement list.
Okay. Thank you, Alder. Any other communications?
Mayor?
Alder Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you. This is a referral to personnel, uh, for an update on the Alder Orientation Program that was submitted approximately two years ago.
Thanks, Alder. Any others?
Mr. Mayor?
Alder Gerlach?
I have no idea if this is appropriate. Um, I, I don't want to do anything official, but I, I, there's something that we had in the agenda that we approved and didn't get any kind of comment, and I would just, if, if this is an appropriate time to say that I have read the housing market study. We approve, we, we received it and placed it on file, and I just don't want it to go unnoticed that there's so much for alders to learn in that report, and I would just urge everyone to read it. It just gave me a whole different understanding of Green Bay.
Absolutely. I would certainly second that. Any other communications?
Motion to refer.
There you go.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stor to refer all petitions and communications to the proper authority. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it, and those communications have been referred. Adjournment?
Hearing?
Woo, second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Eyes have it, we're adjourned. Thanks, all.